We're ready. Oh, okay. Yeah.
We will get started in a few minutes. Senator Summers is on her way. You ready?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the City of Groton Committee of the whole for Monday, July 28, 2025. City Clerk, please call the roll.
This evening, we have Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Councillor Piazza, Councillor Sheffield, Councillor Norris.
Okay, thank you. So new business is initially we'll have a legislative update. So I want to thank Senator Summers, Representative Bumgarner, and Representative Gieske for coming out. Thank you for giving us this update of what happened during the last legislative session. And if you also want to talk about what you think might be coming up in the next session, that would be helpful as well. And then we'll open the floor for discussion from councils. So Senator Summers, I will start with you.
I'm not really sure where to start, but we, I brought with me the major public acts, but I think we probably have to nail that this will go over all the, what we consider the major acts of the past, just because they're in them and we supported them. There's some in here that are great, some that I don't think are so great, but these are the major legislative acts. We also have, I broke it down specifically because I know there's been a lot of concern about the rising cost of insurance, not only for cars and homeowners, but if you live near the shoreline, there's a special package that is just on insurance issues. And then there's also one for town clerks and elections that I thought you might be interested in. So I, there's copies here that you can take as you need and pass out. So overall, I thought this legislative session, in being there for 10 years, was one of the most difficult sessions that I have been through. And part of that is because there were so many bills coming at us from so many different angles. We had, in my opinion, we had a lot of infighting within each political party as to what bills should be sort of brought to the forefront or not. So I can tell you, in the committees that I sit on, I'm the ranking member of appropriations, which is the Budget Committee. Usually, just for people watching, it's the chairs and the rankings that do the majority of the bulk of the heavy lifting in the committees. And obviously, the Budget Committee takes an enormous amount of time. I also sit as the ranking on Public Health. I'm on Commerce. I sit on regs Review, which reviews all the regulations. I'm the co-chair of the Tourism Caucus and many other different caucuses that we have, everything from like the Biotech Caucus to the Sportsman's Caucus or the Rural Caucus. So there's many of those. And this, this year, we spent, I spent an inordinate amount of time on the budget. And unfortunately, the way the budget works, and I think this is important for people watching, is that the Appropriations Committee spends so much time by district, I'm sorry, not by district, by subject, by line item, going through and coming up with a budget that is developed off of what the governor comes out with. So this is one of the first times that, I've been on appropriations for nine years, and this is one of the first times where the Appropriations Committee really deviated, I think significantly, from the governor's budget. One area in particular had to do with the funding of schools. We felt it was really important to what we call, everybody calls "hold harmless" our school districts. And what that means is to be able to fund them at the rate that they are currently getting funding. Ninety percent of the schools that are impacted by not holding towns harmless are in eastern Connecticut. We have a lot of small towns, Groton would be one of them included, that do not have the population or have lost population. And the formula does not really, that they use to establish education funding, does not really address the fact that if you have a small school and you lose, I'm just making this up, five kids, that doesn't mean that you lose a teacher. So you're still having to expend the same amount of money, whether it's a teacher, a social worker, et cetera, but you're not getting that income from the student as you lose the student. So what we've done to prevent towns from major losses is to quote "hold them harmless." So they've been given the same funding that they've been getting for years. It hasn't gone up, but they haven't lost it. And again, ninety percent of those that would be affected are in eastern Connecticut where they would lose funding. Many are in my district. So we really, the governor did not hold towns harmless. That's one thing that we insisted on. That was a big battle until the end. And actually, it wasn't in the final budget. And we had to argue with the administration, saying, none of us are going to support this budget if it's not back in there. So that's one thing that I think is a significant priority within the budget. There are some things in the budget that I thought were gimmicks and I didn't agree with. We are funding pre-K education by taking $300 million out of our surplus. I don't have a problem with funding pre-K education. It just needs to be on the budget. So it's taken and it's put what they call "off budget." It's in a separate account that nobody gets to see. And the issue with that kind of accounting is that that is exactly what we were doing before I was elected. And in 2016, we were in grave financial problems because we did all this stuff off-budget. Nobody could actually see what was going on. And that's my fear. I don't want to go back to that. That kind of budgeting ended up giving Connecticut the two largest tax increases in Connecticut history. So I want to fund pre-K education. I just want it to be on the budget. And so there, there are things like that that I did not agree with. The good news is, we were able to increase the funding for special education. And the reason I'm speaking on these things in particular is because this is what drives your property taxes, because the education budget is usually about seventy-five percent of, you know, the town's budget, because it's so expensive. So that is, you know, key to keeping everybody's property taxes down. So there are many things in the budget. I won't go into it for too much more detail, but I actually have a big picture summary that I can leave with you. It talks about some of the tax decreases. It talks about some of the appropriations. You know, there's increase for private providers for things like social work and behavioral health. We are helping our hospitals not to the tune of what they should be. We're going to have a hospital problem with Medicaid reimbursement. We gave a massive amount of money to UConn, both to the Health Center and to the university. We looked at the block grants for school-based health clinics. That's one thing that in the past, the governor has, or actually, it's federal funding that starts school-based health clinics. We had some in, in our district. And I know in Ledgerd and Stonington that were started up. They were funded for one year. And last budget, they had no funding for them, which to me is just criminal. You don't start something and then you just don't fund it. And we were able to find the funding for them through the State Department of Education. This year, our school-based health clinics throughout Connecticut and eastern Connecticut in particular are fully funded. That was one thing that was really important to us on the Budget Committee. There's a lot of bills that passed in public health, everything from maternal health to a prescription drug initiative that we're going to actually be having a press conference on this week, which will help lower the cost of prescription drugs for individuals, many other bills within public health. And we also were able to pass, you know, personally, pass some really good environmental bills, including beneficial use dredging, which I think is critically important. I know that the representative had some other bills that, that he worked on that were important. We did an invasive species bill that passed. And I was really proud. I, I put in a bill for, it's kind of a voyeurism bill, but it has to do with AI porn, which is something that is critically important to me, because it happened to a young girl in my district, where somebody takes an image of a young person and morphs it onto a body that is not theirs, goes all over the internet, as you can imagine, when it's out there. It's all generated by AI. There's really a difficult way to pull it back off. And when that happens to a young person, especially a young female, it is devastating. And so we wanted to make sure that that does not happen again. That did pass in one of our general law bills. Or if it is done, that there is grave repercussions to it, because it just absolutely destroys people's lives. And it's not right. And that was something that was really important to me. So that was something that also passed. I can go on and on, but I'm going to stop and let the others have an opportunity to speak. And if there's anything specific that you're interested in, I'm happy to address it.
Okay, thank you. Representative Bumgarner?
Good evening, everyone. It's great to be with you all. Just want to take a moment to thank each and every one of you for your service to the city. I've had the privilege of working with all of you over the last few years. And I know in the case of Mayor Hedrick, I know this is our, our last meeting with you. I want to thank you for your many years of, of service to the city. And each and every one of you, as you pursue future endeavors. But this year, all in all, for, at least for Groton, it was a successful legislative session, as the Senator articulated, with respect to local aid, in particular ECS funding, at a time when we're seeing cuts, really draconian, cruel cuts at federal government at the, at the local and state level. We are fulfilling our commitment to our local taxpayers that we're going to continue protecting education, pre-education, pre-K education and childcare. It is absolutely critical that, you know, when we work on state budgets, local budgets, that they're pro-family. And I think as a local community, we've done that over the years. And certainly, this past legislative session with the $55.8 billion budget, by any budget that we passed, it does that. As the Senator mentioned, this year, we established a child, early childhood trust fund to the tune of $300 million. Sort of consider it a down payment, so to speak, on programs for early childcare and education. At this point, those dollars are held in a trust that would, that is investable by the state treasurer. So those funds, over the years, can continue to grow. And those will be more and more dollars that we can put towards building new childcare facilities, lowering the cost of providing the care and education, which is so important. That way, we have a really important service to offer our families, especially for folks here who have limitations, if maybe they don't have a family member living nearby. You know, somebody, a young engineer or a young couple who is, you know, working at EP or one of our great local employers, they need to have supports in place so that their kids have safe attention and, you know, a, a healthy and safe learning environment for their youngsters. But all in all, some of the, you know, the, the work I specifically did in this past year, I, in addition to serving as an Assistant Majority Leader, was appointed early this year to serve as Vice Chair of the Environment Committee. I also serve on the Finance Revenue and Bonding Committee and its General Obligation Bonding and Transportation Bonding Subcommittee, the Transportation Committee, and the Energy and Technology Committee. All committees that have a lot of touchpoints locally. I know this year, we've talked a lot about issues relating to resilience in particular. This year, we passed SB, SB nine and HB 5004, which are two bills. In the case of 5004, more of a climate action bill, so to speak, whereas SB nine is more focused on resilience, making sure that we have policies in place, whether through insurance or through land use policies, you know, within our municipality relating to zoning, that we have a good plan in place to protect our coastline in the worst-case scenarios from, you know, a greater frequency of extreme weather events, which I know each and every one of you are familiar with just by virtue of living here in the city. The city is very vulnerable to those rising tides, whether it's Eastern Point or other areas of town, Jupiter Point. There are so many low-lying areas with, with a lot of people that those extreme weather events, they're, they're, they're going to be at risk. And luckily, we have such an amazing public safety team here, you know, and utilities team. I would note with our utility friends, always the first in the region to get the power back on after those extreme weather events. And I, I think that is a testament, again, to the professionalism of, of the city and the, the great team and staff. So again, any, anything we can do to continue to support the city through, you know, targeted infrastructure investments, you know, and supporting city ratepayers in particular. And, and then most importantly, making sure that, you know, the city is a place where families can thrive. But I know each and every one of you have questions. Don't want to dive too deep into any issue area unless you have specific questions. And I think all of you know how to find me as well. Thank you.
Representative Gieske?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And also thank you for your service to the City of Groton and the town of Groton as a whole. It was a pleasure working with you through my years on the Town Council and now as a state representative. And I wish you the best in your future endeavors. And thank you for your service. I, my colleagues covered a lot of things I was going to discuss as my good colleagues. And, oh, also, I was elected in a special session in February. So coming in, it was great to join an experienced and knowledgeable legislative delegation with Senator Summers and Representative Bumgarner. And I'm proud to work alongside them. Anyway, so coming in, in the middle of session, as Senator Summers had mentioned, with our school funding of the "hold harmless," that got bipartisan support. You know, one thing up in the, learning in the cap, in my time at the Capitol, I've noticed that there are sometimes not necessarily Democrat, Republican issues. There are eastern Connecticut issues that we all advocate for. Could be, as Senator Summers, the main one is the "hold harmless" for our schools. The childcare trust fund that we created, that is, that just takes surplus money. So it's, what is that, what is going to end up doing for the next couple of years, to go into a little bit more detail about that, it's going to put 300 million this year, a max of 300 million of surplus money. And then the following year, it's another 300 million. And then it's, it acts as an endowment. So I believe it's 10% for the first year you can use. So that's $30 million for pre-K. And then it's 8%, and it's hopefully going to grow. So it was a creative way to address the pre-K need. And then I want to touch on, I can't remember if it was 5004 or SB nine, the environmental bills. We allowed for a town aid road to be used for sustainability practices as well. So what that came with was a little bit of bumped in funding for town aid road, which goes through the town back to the city during your budget cycle. So we, there was a little bit of extra money for that that was unexpected. I know the mayor had asked issues that could be potentially coming up. So we did a big housing bill that the governor ended up vetoing. So we will continue to work and progress in that issue. So I know housing stock is an issue. Rents are ever so increasing. And there are just, there's going to have to be a better way. And then more of a, in the governor's veto, he wanted more of a partnership between municipal, a greater partnership between municipalities and whatever bill is produced. So we're going to go back to the drawing board on that. And then also potential cuts from DC, whether that's Medicaid cuts or SNAP benefit cuts. We're going to probably have to go back in a special session to address those. So something to kind of look out for. And then we, this doesn't affect City of Groton residents, because they are, they have the crown jewel of electric companies, in my opinion, of Groton Utilities. But we did a major, energy costs have been soaring for non-Groton Utilities customers. So it was a really big deal to my constituents, mostly in New London. And I know my other colleagues, but what happened was, is they took the public benefits charge out of a, of the Eversource bill, and we used, and they used bond money to do that. Well, public utility companies make roughly about 7% of the energy that is consumed in the state of Connecticut. So what we did as a legislative delegation is we met with members of the Energy Committee to try and obtain some of that money for local public utility companies. Although it was not successful is something that I would like to look into coming up in further legislative sessions to really benefit Groton and city residents. So those are the main things I just wanted to touch on. And I believe we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you. I'll open the floor to council. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you all for coming. I did attend the legislative update with the state reps. So I did ask some questions there already. But I, I do have some additional ones. The first one that came to mind, although it was at the tail end of your discussion, for the housing bill that got vetoed, I'm curious for each of you, which parts of it you are going to push to keep in that bill and which parts of it you oppose.
I, I did not support that bill. That bill, in my opinion, when you read through it, no municipalities were supporting that bill, except for the big cities. I did not look at the, when you looked at the, the testimony, mayors and selectmen were very concerned about quite a few things within that bill. And, and I'm concerned that the bill is not going to have the light of day. Right now, you know, you heard the good representatives that were going back to the drawing board. That's not what's happening. There's very few people with the governor deciding what bill they may want to bring out in special session. I oppose that sort of governmental decision-making, because I think that the public needs to have an opportunity to weigh in. And that means municipal leaders like yourselves. That means general public. That means people that are building houses, people that are in the, the market to create housing. There are certain things in there that are, were very difficult for people to swallow. It was a bold attempt at really, in my opinion, overtaking local planning and zoning. And it did not, for example, if you looked at that bill, especially in our district, or my district, I should say, you could put a five-story building in downtown Mystic with no parking. You could have people that were homeless, which is an issue that we're going to have to address, that we, you know, have been struggling with for years and years and years. That's, and it's something that we have to find a better solution to. But according to the bill, you could have a homeless encampment, I'll call it that, set up on any municipal property. It could be in Washington Park. It could be the Mystic River Park. And you cannot move them along unless you find suitable housing for them. That is very problematic for, and I'm not speaking for myself. I'm speaking for people that testified for many municipalities. You know, I know that the governor was concerned about that in Greenwich, setting up and having a homeless encampment. You cannot move people along. Right now, I know that we deal with that locally here, and our police are heavily involved. We try to find a suitable housing. There's many, I actually have been with some of your police officers to meet some of the folks that are homeless that have encampments in certain areas in town. And you try to work with them to find suitable housing. Sometimes you're successful. Sometimes they, people don't want that. And so that was one of the things that sent a lot of local leaders to not support the bill. In addition, there was very creative language. One of the things was called hostile architecture. And nobody really understood what that was. An example was a park bench that maybe had, you know, when you sit in the airport, you would have chairs that you can't really lay down on because they have the, the armrest. So if you had a park bench that had, you know, the metal separator, so you couldn't lay down, that could be considered hostile architecture. So the town would be responsible for taking that out and replacing it with something that was not considered hostile. There are some good things in the bill, but it was too much, too soon shoved into this massive package that really had a lot of pushback from CCM, from COST, from municipal leaders across state. And I never think it's good legislation to force something on people when you have so many towns against it. I think it needs to go back to the drawing board. And, you know, unfortunately, I think the legislature sometimes just wants to push something through so that you can say, oh, I did this. You know, I, I fixed that. I, I did something for housing. But I think we have to do it the right way and make sure that we have public input. It's really important. People choose to live in areas for specific reasons. And so those are some of the reasons. There's a lot more. I want to give other people time. There are some good things in the bill that I do think are important. I understand that we need to increase housing stock. I understand. But I think we can do that in a different way. We have the Connecticut Housing and Finance Authority that has great programs that sometimes people don't know about. We've just managed to do things. I'm just going to give you some examples on what we call affordable housing. Affordable net housing is not Section eight housing that everyone used to think about. It's housing where a certain percentage is set aside, and your rent can't be more than 30% of your income. So if a developer wants to create an affordable housing, and there's tax incentives that get tax credits for doing this, for, I think it's 10 to 15 years, depending on which level you want. So if somebody wanted to come in and build 100 apartments and have 30% of them being affordable, they could go ahead and do that. In the past, though, we were charging them property tax on those 30% that they're not getting the market value at regular property tax. So that was a disincentive for developers to even want to set aside anything for affordable housing. We fixed that. So now that's one thing that we fixed. The other thing that we fixed that will help increase housing stock, that has been a problem for many years, and I'm sorry, I'm going a problem for many years, and I'm sorry, I'm going on and on, and I'll be quiet very soon, is we've had this mixed-up ratio in the state of Connecticut for our unions, especially in the home builders, where we've had, most states have, for an example, they have one journeyman to three apprentices. Connecticut, you require three journeymen to one apprentice. So our people that are building houses, when they are, they can't hire enough journeymen for the apprentices. And so we are graduating these kids and putting them through this work development, then they can't get jobs. We have that in Stonington as a program for home builders, and those kids can't get jobs because there's not journeymen to the ratio. So we fixed that, that came out of commerce, that's something that we've been trying to fix for a long time. Changing that, you will definitely see some new development of housing, but it's been impossible to get the workers to create the housing. So we're trying to take like very important intentional steps to be able to create housing that hopefully we can set some aside for affordability. I know in my, in the district outside of Groton, I've met with many developers that are interested in now doing some affordable housing, but they have unique twists to it. The affordable housing that I've been exposed to is not just to rent, because renting forever does not necessarily build wealth, it's getting affordable housing that someone can own, which I think is really, really creative. And those are things that I think should be incorporated in a housing bill. Those things were sort of left aside, I'll put it that way. I don't sit on the Housing Committee, so I can't really speak to how this bill all came to be, but I'm glad that the governor vetoed it. I think it was the right thing to do, and I think that we should go back and listen to the people actually building the housing, the people that need the housing, and make sure that we have a public hearing where municipalities can have input, and, and also the public. There was a disincentive within this bill that basically said in so many ways, if you don't have enough housing, we have an opportunity to go back and cut things like your LoSiP funding or this funding. And that's really tough, because there's a lot of rural communities that do not have the infrastructure to even create affordable housing. They don't have sewer, they don't have water, they don't have those things, they're not close to a transportation system. So I'm not sure how valuable it is to have affordable housing in, you know, an area that has nowhere, like, I'm going to pick on a town like Canterbury, I'm just going to pick on that, because like, that's the only one I can think of, that's far away from places, that's hard to get to, that people may not have transportation, there's no bus route. You know, we have to think about where to put it so people can get to where they, where they're working. So those are some of the reasons why I didn't support the bill. I think we have a great opportunity to go back and redo it, it just has to be done the right way, and we have, we need to have your input and the public's input.
So I, I can go through a list of some of the features of the bill that I would say was very supportive of. So starting with, so annual housing authority reporting requirement, so that's really important, especially for Groton right now, given some of the news, we found out that the Groton Housing Authority is being investigated by the FBI. At a bare minimum, we should ensure that reports are being generated by our housing authorities, so our residents and taxpayers here know exactly what is happening, ensuring that the individuals and bodies that are in place to protect our, you know, our most vulnerable citizens, you know, the 65 and up, and, you know, folks who are disabled that require, that really, you know, depend on, on this housing that's provided by Groton Housing Authority. You know, there are plans in place to invest in that housing stock, but it certainly is still not enough to ensure that all of our citizens can live affordably, especially our older residents that are on, on fixed incomes, that are already, you know, they're already strapped for cash as is. So we really need to have that in place. There are other provisions within 5002 that address housing authorities, just with respect to oversight, but also leveraging housing authorities to create what we describe as missing middle housing. Senator Summers talked about, sort of, we think of, you know, based off of stereotype, affordable housing being Section 8 housing, which isn't always true, right? There are a lot of forms of housing, whether it's through, you know, private landlord or, you know, federally subsidized housing, or, you know, housing administered by our housing authority. So there's a lot of different tools that we can use to provide affordable housing, but missing middle housing is really important. And that's, that's one area where I think, should we go back to the drawing board, we should reprioritize. Lastly, or two more things, one, I would say, the minimum parking requirements, doing away with minimum parking requirements for residential building, leaving that to the free market. We talk so much about free markets, free markets, let the markets decide, but we don't allow developers to do that, or our own residents to do that with how, with parking, which is a bit odd to me. So that's an area that I, I think we should definitely revisit. And then lastly, I would say, just to go through this real quick, don't want to miss anything. There's a, a lot of good stuff in it. One concern I had, I mean, it was a concern I had when we passed a housing bill maybe two years ago, was the concept of fair, a fair share, which would require municipalities that are not in compliance with 830G to build a certain amount of affordable units. And in my eye, that's a little bit punitive in a way. I, you know, 830G is designed to ensure that municipalities that aren't above that 10% threshold do have affordable housing, and there are so many municipalities that haven't been able to get over that threshold. But in many cases, it's not always to the fault of that municipality. And so that, that's one concern I have, specifically the fair share implementation. But outside of that, there, there was a lot of good in the bill, and, and I think it would be a mistake not to go back to the drawing board. Also included, a, the, a lot of the language for transit-oriented development, the Live, Work, Play Bill, or Live, Live, Work, Ride Bill, that also passed in previous legislative session, but didn't make it out of, pass out of the House two years ago. So all in all, my concern would be more sort of the fair share provisions, but some of the parking stuff, the middle housing, transit-oriented development, I, I think were the good pieces of the bill.
I'll try and be quick. The good in the bill was the Housing Authority Disclosure Forms, as my colleague had mentioned, middle housing. There was funding for CHAF, Connecticut Housing Finance Authority, for more developers. I know the state has continuously invested in that. Transit-oriented communities, so that means if you are within a certain radius of a transit station, such as a railroad station or an airport, then you are eligible, bus stop, you are eligible for state funding to help develop new housing property as well. I thought that was a good time, a good bill. And then I have concerns about the parking, like, I get where it's coming from. The argument that, which kind, that was my main concern with the bill, but the argument that I, I thought of is, you know, if you have a, so say for a single family, it's two parents, two kids, you'd technically have to have, based on the way I read the bill, you'd have, based on the way the parking is, you'd have to have four cars for each one, even though kids are potentially not driving. So that was where I kind of was like, I see where it's coming, but there's also that scenario as well. So hence why I agree with Representative Bumgarner on the free market principle. And then the main thing that came out of the Banking Committee, which I'm a member of, was, it was an employee benefit for first-time homebuyer accounts. So an employer could offer a benefit to an employee, and they'd put in a special deposit for a first time, for a down payment for a first-time home. That would increase, that would potentially increase homeownership for individuals, and it goes into a special account that they can use for that, and it's a separate benefit, similar to a health insurance benefit as well. So I thought that was a really good portion of the bill, and it was a really creative way to increase homeownership, especially among our younger populations. But that's pretty much it on that.
Did you have any other questions?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Yes, thank you. To follow up, so the two main things that I've been hearing from people about the housing bill are, one, about the local housing authority. We here don't have oversight, so I think that, to me, is a very positive thing that would, that we do need to...
I want to clarify one thing. They are required currently to submit a report, they just don't. So there's no enforcement, and our councils are not asking for it either. It's supposed to be posted on Chifa's website, and it's just not. So this will maybe give it some more teeth, but they're supposed to be doing that. I looked up Groton, and the last one that's been filed is 2012. So they are supposed to be doing that currently. This is just to try to enhance them to be better.
I believe the change was from a year to quarterly. That was the change for the housing authorities. That is my understanding of what it's supposed to be, and like, really emphasizing, hey, we're paying attention to this.
And specifically posted to the housing authorities' website.
Okay.
So I will tell you, I have a bill in that I've already worked on specifically for that. Well, I'm actually going to put it in. And it has to do with that the, not only should the housing authority have to post it on a quarterly basis, but it should, should be accepted by the municipality in which the authority resides, so that a council or a mayor has to actually acknowledge and look at it. I'm not sure there's any value in just doing a report and sticking it up on a website that nobody knows where it is. I want the, the local authority, for example, if this had been happening in Groton, and the council actually looked at it, and, you know, they had to have an audit every year, then, then, you know, you're forced to actually look at it rather than it just sitting up on some website. So I think we need even more oversight. I think this is a good start. Yes, we'll do it on a quarterly basis, but if no one's enforcing it, and there's no acknowledgement, then it's just sort of, you know, window dressing. I really think we need to dive deeper after, you know, what we've heard, and, you know, we'll see what comes out of it, and it's important. They can go bond, I mean, they can raise funds, and, you know, we have, in all of the towns, including Groton, my mom was on the housing authority. She just wanted to be on it because she wanted to give people housing, but she wasn't like a qualified financial person to be on that years ago. It's hard for us to find volunteers, so you have an executive director sort of running the show with just volunteers. So I think it's really important that the local government agency is acknowledging, you know, what, what is actually happening. So I just wanted to put that out there.
I appreciate that. So, so that's one thing, and I think partly because it's been in the news, but even, you know, here we've had some housing issues, and everyone's having housing issues, and more accountability, in my mind, something like that is, would be helpful. The second thing is the issue of relinquishing local control over zoning. That is the, probably the loudest complaints that I heard about this particular bill. And I know that Senator Summers spoke to that. So my question to the two state reps is, what is your view of how that would have been affected by this bill? And what do you, what is your response to that? Because that, that was my number one complaint that I heard from residents, was that this bill would have removed a lot of local control, and they were not in favor of that.
My opinion of it is, it didn't remove local control, per se. It just made it, there were, the bill created other funding opportunities, and you just wouldn't be eligible for those funding opportunities if you didn't want to do it. It still gave you the choice to do it, it just didn't, it just, like, you wouldn't be eligible for it. So if you chose not to do it, you wouldn't be eligible for additional grant funding, basically, that's what it is. So I felt that there were, local control was still in the bill, which is why I was comfortable voting for it.
Yeah, I'm, I would say I'm pretty consistent locally, in terms of, or at least in my time serving in local office, about the importance of local control and allowing our planning and zoning commissions to have independence from any other legislative body or, or the politics, per se, and make smart land use decisions that are in the best interests of, of the community and, you know, or neighborhoods that they're making decisions for, or, you know, approve projects or deny projects for. And so, you know, I, I would argue more than anything else, perhaps the, the fair share provisions that were, you know, to, if they were to go in place, kind of the ability for the state to deny certain communities of grant opportunities because they're not moving in a expeditious fashion to, you know, support the goals that were kind of set out by the bill. And I think the goal would be to build housing in places where historically, you know, you haven't been able to build housing, which I think is a very laudable goal. We should be working towards that, ensuring that, you know, our, our communities are welcoming and equitable for, for all people irrespective of their, you know, socioeconomic status. It's really important, especially when you consider the ability for families to get good quality education, you know, being in good school districts. But with that said, you know, we do have a shortage of, of quality affordable housing as well, and we've seen that locally play out. But I, I really think, again, if we're going to go back to a special session again, we've already, you know, the governor vetoed the bill, we're both, you know, Dan and I are Democrats. He's a Democrat, and I think that signaled that this is really, if we're going to, you know, take a second pass at this, it really needs to be a good faith effort to work across party lines to really identify where those common goals are, and, and really work to, you know, to, to, to pass those, those, those laws. So that's something I'm, I'm committed to doing. You know, Senator and I have talked at length about the issues with the housing authority, and love to collaborate with her on that, you know, going into next legislative session. If that's something we could work on, you know, in, if there should be a special session on housing, maybe that's something that could be incorporated as well. But I, I do think there are a lot of areas around housing where there can be some common ground that, that I hope we can work on in the future.
I just want to finish by saying, I, I think the biggest pushback was the local control issue, and I think that there is an opportunity. I don't know whether we have to do it in special session, because again, I think we really need to do this transparently, and so that you all and citizens get to have your say. When you go back to special session, if this is being written with the governor and, you know, the chair of the Housing Committee, then no one really knows what's going on, and it's not really fair to vote on something that we've had no public input on. You might have had public input in certain areas, but not on that particular bill, and nobody knows what that bill's going to look like. I think local control was the biggest pushback. As I said, if you have a really rural town, like Scotland, Connecticut, that maybe is getting a new zip code, right? You don't have any infrastructure, so is that really, should that town be penalized for not having the ability to create affordable housing when it's not set up for that? And so I'm, I'm always been an advocate of incentivizing, not penalizing. And I think that there is opportunities to incentivize not only developers, but towns that maybe want to look at their plan of conservation and development, want to look at where they could maybe have housing where they haven't thought about it before, in a positive way, rather than this sort of punitive way. And, and I think that, that's what I heard from municipalities and from leaders across the state. And I think that there's an opportunity to do it. I just don't know whether doing it in special session when there's no input is the proper way to do it. So, you know, we can talk about housing forever. One thing I do want to say while people may be listening is that the Connecticut, Chifa has programs that many people don't know about. One of them in particular is a first-time homebuyer program, where if you qualify, you can qualify for a down payment from $5,000 to $50,000 to put as a first-time homebuyer, and you're considered a first-time homebuyer if you haven't owned a home for three years. So if you're somebody who, you know, sold your house and has been renting, and you wanted to downsize, and it's been three years, you would still fall into that category, depending on what your income is, you can qualify. And if you remain in the house for a certain amount of time, then that is something that, that town payment goes away. If you sell your house before, then you can't, you know, flip the house and make money, you'd have to probably pay the down payment back. But there are programs like that, that people don't know about, so go to Chifa, look at the programs that are available. We just did a round of bonding for them, and they're, they're funded every year for housing, and there are opportunities there. So I just want everybody to know that who may be listening.
Okay. I want to see if other people have questions, and then we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Any other councillors, Councilor Sheffield?
Listening to the housing and the transit piece of where, you know, communities that are distant and communities need to find a way to get to work and then have a, you know, affordable housing, my next step would be, let's look at the whole economic development blueprint to incorporate that transportation, the housing, that can connect these communities that are maybe a little more distant to get to work. that can connect these communities that are maybe a little more distant to get to work and have, again, building housing to surround that for their infrastructure, to develop an economic plan with infrastructure, small businesses, to incorporate and have a complete plan similar to, I guess, what was done in Killingley, which is that tax incremental financing thing that developed Killingley to where we had it set up here, but we haven't implemented it here in Groton very well. So what types of things that is the state doing as far as trying to get development to connect with the transportation, the housing, to incorporate all that into an economic development package? Is there anything like that at the Capitol that can connect all of that?
So that's what the Work, Live, Ride bill kind of did was it that which was incorporated in 5002 is it gave money for potential development on fixed routes. So, for example, in the city of New London, I which I represent as well, I have constituents who build their entire life around the bus route system in the sense that, okay, I'm going to go to the grocery store this time. I need to get to the bus for this this time in order to get to work on time. And that so to have housing in those areas and on those lines, there was incentive, there was funding through that program that was created through it to incentivize development in those areas. So that was kind of where it was headed. It was it's been a concept for a long time and to put it into action has been a little bit difficult. I know it's passed the House a couple of times, but it never got called in the Senate. And now it's passed it got it was put in 5002 and ended up being vetoed. But it's that's kind of where we're headed with it. There's a lot of work to be done on it still. And I think it's it's something that we're definitely considering.
My next question, going back to education, that trust fund that is set up for pre-K, how long will that fund last? Of course, without any federal money coming in, what's the future years for the next possibly three with, you know, minimal federal money coming in? So how is that going to play as far as keeping that fund solvent?
So the problem with those funds is that they can be raided. And that's what's happened previously, which is why I didn't agree with doing that. You know, you could use the surplus funds. There was plenty of money within our current. We had not reached the cap yet, so we could have used that dental delta that we had to start the pre-K. And that's why putting things off budget is difficult. So and the representative is right, 10% can be used. So only 10%, so $30 million is going to be used by the Office of Early Childhood to sort of develop the plan. What is it going to look like? Are we going to not necessarily brick and mortar build pre-K? But how are we going to fund it? Are we going to fund it at daycares currently? Or are we going to bring it into the schools? How is it? What's it going to look like? And right now, the way that the the language in the budget passed for the next X amount of years in perpetuity, the surplus money will be going into this pre-K until it can fully fund pre-K. And it will go up each year as to how much more money can be taken. So there's no final plan at this point. You know, I'm somebody who personally, I agree that we need to fund pre-K because we have students coming into kindergarten, some can read, some have never even been to preschool. So there's this huge delta that that gap doesn't really close. Sometimes, you know, when you're in fourth grade, it's starting to close. But at some point, you know, you're you're starting kids at very different levels. And it would be really helpful, not only for the childcare aspect of it, but making sure that kids are on a more evil level playing field when they enter into kindergarten. So that's the plan now to continue that taking from the surplus, if we have one, and putting that into this endowment. But again, the issue that I have is not the idea of funding pre-K. It's how we're doing it and that it's off budget. And this type of off budget accounting is exactly what got us into the problems that we had in 2016. And that's what makes me very hesitant. So.
Yeah, as as a follow up to that, yeah, now, where do you anticipate, since we have, I guess, had a surplus for this past budget year, are we looking at that for next year? How's, you know, the setup? I knew sometimes it's been that windfall deficit the following year. So how was that? How are we looking at?
We are looking like we'd be in fairly good position. But then after that, it doesn't look so great. It looks like we will be running. You know, obviously, all this can change depending on what happens. But we're setting ourselves up with some of the things that have happened, you know, with the money that came in from COVID. It was very clear and even some towns have run into this. Here's your money. Don't start a new program because there's not going to be the funding coming. Well, of course, you know, it's like your kids. Don't do those and they do it. And so now there's these programs that we've started that we have to figure out how we're going to fund them. So if you're looking at and trust me, being on this budget committee and all the details, there's so many great things that we're funding and nobody wants to cut the things that hurt, especially those most that are most vulnerable. You know, I mean, there's so many different things in there. But we are going to have to figure out how we're going to fund some of this stuff in the future. And and that's always the difficulty. And raising taxes in this economy when everybody is, you know, reeling from inflation and, you know, insurance rates are going up, everything's so much more expensive, you know, you have to figure out where that tipping point is. And and, you know, the best way that we can do it is to grow our economy and not have to go back to our property tax folks and say, guess what? We're raising your taxes.
Yeah.
Hold on. Any other first time speakers? Councillor Norris?
Can I quickly address just two points?
Okay, go ahead.
Just on the childcare front, by the state treasurer being able to invest those funds, that $300 million can can grow within one year, right? And then two years after that, three years after that. So each contribution we make into that fund will see a greater return in the long run. So that that's why I think it was designed in a way where for the long term, if we're being serious about a long term investment in childcare, that that was the best solution. And I I think it'll work. Additionally, as the Senator articulated, the budget is balanced. We have a very healthy surplus. We are rainy day fund is roaring along. Absolutely. We're maxed out. And the doll and the governor is very firm in his commitment to ensuring that we're living within our means. I think we see that with the bond commission agenda to every every three months. So he really is practicing what he's preaching. As frustrating as it is, especially when you're trying to get some local projects over the finish line, but I think because of that fiscal discipline, we're likely to see over the coming years, especially with more cuts coming down the pike and and more that we're also the state having to contribute more to certain federal government programs like SNAP and Medicaid, right, with the Medicaid cuts that are going to come down the pike the next couple of years. That's where we're going to see a lot of distressers. And again, we cannot raise taxes. We've done that before. And I I just can't in good faith vote for a tax increase at the state level. Very proud to have never done that yet. You know, still haven't done it. And I and I, you know, last, you know, last year, we passed the second largest tax cut in state history. So and of course, my first time around, I didn't vote for the state budget because it raised taxes, the second largest increase in state history. So this year, we held a line on on taxes. We also, I would note, kind of the theme of supporting working families. For the first time ever, we'll be providing working families a $250 refundable child tax credit. My opinion, it should be more. It should and that's per child. And refundable means that as long as you fall within those income levels, you're guaranteed that amount as well, which will really make a difference for so many families that are sort of teetering on the edges. So all in all, I I think, again, for the kind of conditions that we're in, it was it was we saw a lot of successes. But we still have a lot of work to do and we definitely need to keep an eye toward the future, especially as it relates to Washington.
So if I can just piggyback on that, there was tax increases in this budget. We increased hospital tax by $375 million to our local hospitals. And we includes $141 million in tax for our provider tax, which and in '26 and in '27, it's going to increase by $497 million. We also increased business taxes for net operating losses, the unitary reporting and extension of corporate tax surcharges. So there was tax increases in this budget. They're just not really talked about and they impact certain businesses and hospitals. So I do want to touch base on the Medicaid reimbursement. Medicaid, the way that we get Medicaid reimbursement is very complicated in the state of Connecticut. And we do have an opportunity. I brought written an op ed. I'm happy to send it all to you about how we can maximize the match that we get from the federal government. It is something that we are we've kind of, you know, what did they say? Old habits die hard. We've just been doing the same thing. If we had looked at the way other states that are much more successful can bring, we could bring about $2 billion more in Medicaid funding to the state of Connecticut if we entertain this thing called a 115 waiver. It does take some work to do, but other states have done it. And what that does is that gives us an ability to better support our hospitals and also to increase the rates that our providers get when they see a Medicaid patient. Most of our clinicians, when they're seeing a Medicaid patient, and in some cases, you know, I can speak to a radiologist who looks at a mammogram for somebody who's on Medicaid. They had not had an increase in about 16 years. I think they got about $6.95 to look at that mammogram. So those are like, we're so far behind in bringing up what the providers are reimbursed. Some providers now are opting out and they're saying, I can't take any Medicaid patients anymore because I can't keep the lights on. So it's really important that we address this. You know, Connecticut, Connecticut, the way that we reimburse is is lower than some of like the southern states, which you would not expect. So I think there's an opportunity there. We just have to make sure that we have our eyes open and look at things differently than we've always done. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew that.
Councillor Norris?
Thank you all for coming. And I agree with some of the things that were said here, especially from Senator Summers. So thank you. Some of the information you presented today is extremely helpful. And I wish we could hear more of those things at a later date that can impact our residents immediately. For example, the Child Credit Act, I remember talking to the governor about it last year. And I was like, we got to do something about this. So I'm glad that happened. You know, talking about the down payment assistance for residents, that's immediate. So if you come back again, those are the kind of things that would love our residents to hear that they can grab and run with. I have a request through a question, I guess. From time to time, there are quite a number of small grants out there, $5,000, $10,000, $15,000, that you kind of have to be in the know to know that they're out there. And I'm still a little fuzzy out with the town and the city due to the state grant stuff. But my request to you is, how do we get on your radar that if you hear of something as simple as a $7,000 juvenile prevention grant, that we also hear about it? Because those are the kind of things that usually don't hit the big screen or the state websites. They're they're kind of like three levels back. You know, something that, you know, simple is programming for arts and the commission of the arts and all what we can do with youth and seniors right here in the city. But they're small dollar figures. And I always say, my grandfather used to say, take care of your pennies and everything else will flow. So if we can somehow start to capture some of that, then it could help our residents defray their cost of programming through something as simple as summer camp or introducing new programs on a city level. So that's all I have to ask. Thank you.
Great. You mentioned summer camps. So that's something that I wanted to bring up to you that I think is really important is there was this, and I was like definitely leading the charge against this bill. It was a SB eight. Look it up and weep. It was a bill, again, 80 municipalities wrote in against it. I think you did too. Thank you for that, by the way. By the way, I I apologize for not I I don't feel like I'm not going to see you. I feel like you're still going to be involved. So I think we're going to have another meeting probably before you leave office. So I'm sorry I didn't say my goodbyes now. But and you your mayor testifies all the time. It's super helpful, whether it's an energy bill or something. He's always willing to, you know, help. If we're like, hey, can you testify? Can you look at this? So there's a bill that I think we all need to be a careful, you know, keep our eyes on SB eight. I know that Representative Baumgartner, when I after my freak out, I called him. I'm like, get up here. It was a bill that was going to absolutely destroy summer camps for municipalities. And I I've heard it's rearing its ugly head again. This is just one of those things where, you know, someone has an idea in their mind and the it's the Senate too. It's the majority in the Senate that wants to push something through. Thank God we have the House to stop it because it 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 tries to turn municipal summer camp into a daycare. And it has things like sink to toilet ratios. I'm like, how do you do that when the camp's outside? You know, things like this. A full time nurse goes through like, it's just insane, the requirements. We had, you know, 80 different municipalities testifying, do not do this. We had the first selectman of Stonington come up saying, you're going to hurt kids. We're not going to be able to afford summer camp. It was going to triple the cost. And everybody knows that our municipal summer camps are where my kids went there. It's where like you're working. It's where your kids can go and play with their friends and have a safe, fun experience. And my son worked at the camp in Groton and he used to chase kids that ran away. You know, like, you know, it was just it's sort of a rite of passage that many of us go through. And and this bill, probably well intended, was just going to change the trajectory of every summer camp in the state. So we'll keep you posted on that, but we'd need your help to help stop that. And again, this is an example of so many municipalities coming out against it and the people that are behind the bill not listening because they just pushed it through. And thank God you guys were able to stop it. Because I'm like, I can't believe you're supporting this and no one else does. So it became a big thing. CCM was against it. Again, that's the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. But the best, though, was the person who was the proponent of the bill. I asked on the floor, you know, who supported this? Give me, did you talk to any towns? And the answer was, yes, I talked to the town of Cheshire and I talked to the head of the Parks and Rec of the state of Connecticut. I'm like, really? Because they were at my press conference coming out against the bill. I just happen to have Cheshire and the head of the Parks and Rec Department. So you talked to them, but you didn't share that they were totally against the bill. So those are the kinds of things that I'm not sure what what the impetus is behind it that is really relevant. So those are the things that we need your help on to help stop. As far as the grants, to be honest with you, none of us here know all the grants. There is 10 million grants. If there is, I mean, I know a lot of them and I know I don't know, like, I can't even touch on how many grants there are. Sometimes I'll call and help trying to help you. I'm like, can we do this? Can we do this? Where's this grant? And you'll find out that there's a grant for some fund that you've never even heard of within a department usually. So we fund the departments and they've got all these secret little line items of grants that we may not know about. So if you have a certain area that you're interested in, like you you brought up the arts and culture. There's the Connecticut Humanities Grant. If you tell us what you're thinking, we can go try to find out where those grants are all hidden, other than the big ones that we know. And like, if we find out that there are grants, like I just put something out, it's not the state, but it's funded by the state, which is women owned businesses. These Women Business Development Council is going to come out with our next round of grant opportunities. So that's something I try to post. So any woman owned business would know, hey, you can apply and get a grant up to $10,000 for your small business. So we'll try to post them and we can try to send them to you when we know about them. But if if not, if there's a specific area you're all interested in, let's say, I don't know, I'm making something up. You want to do something with youth to do training for youth for workforce development. I'm making that up. We'll try we'll try to find out where the grant opportunities are and get back to you. I wish there was a list of like every grant known to mankind that the state gives out. That would make everybody's life interesting, but there isn't.
Okay. In an effort to move the meeting forward, I'll let the representatives close out. Do you? Okay, you have not spoken. Councillor Piazza, please, you have the floor.
Mayor, mine are just going to be more comments on everything that's been spoken. So and I think it's more at a lower level for myself. But first on the AI voyeurism, I really appreciate that. Haven't been a nurse for a long time, but also being involved in sex track training. Haven't been a nurse for a long time, but also being involved in sex track training. That had started a long time ago before even AI came in. But it was more at a hand-to-hand, kind of like snail mail kind of thing more. So it's good to see that people have their eyes on that. Because I personally see that handled as being a nurse one time in emergency placement shelters, you know, and assessing, we see that a lot happen. It's unfortunate, yes. So thank you for that. So on Medicaid, that's a really, when you talk about, having been a nurse and also a veteran and looking at that, it's, to me, I find it very cyclical. Cyclical in the fact that when we're talking about housing and we're talking about the bill and then also, you know, if we had tents being set up and then we can't just move along so forth and so on. I get that. But I also see, and yes, there are people that don't want help. But then also I see a large amount of people who go for resources and get lost on the wayside. I've seen teens who age out of group homes and are not successful and become homeless also. Because they haven't, you know, they given their resources, but they're, they don't have people to kind of maneuver them around. Or you have, you know, there's mental health involved, training involved, careers training involved. So there's so many things added in there. So with all that said, the other part I want to say as far as Medicaid, when you say professionals, you know, that I totally understand that they're not getting paid for what they are. But then also too, on the other hand, we find patients, clients, don't get their care that they need. Because it's like, I can't get the care or I can't afford it. So I'll give an example, I won't say who it is. So they made just a little bit more, went into access health, pay for their own insurance. Then, so now testing that they need it, which was really going to be originally paid by Medicaid, hopefully, kind of like how they were treated, they came to me about it, was kind of like just called. And I feel like sometimes when you're carrying that insurance is kind of, I'm sure it's kind of like a back and forth kind of thing. But then when they had to receive another test, they can't receive the test because they don't have the money. They own $1,500 upfront. Now it's not, the person that's going to read $6.95, now the person that's going to read it wants to add another test, now they have to pay $1,500. So then they don't have the tests. So then what do we have? So now we have a client that doesn't get that, then goes, then things get worse. And then they go into urgent care, emergency, blah, blah, blah. And now the care is more, bills on their side is more, they're going to have to give them the care. So that's more, can't deny it. And it just, and then we get a higher recidivism rate, I feel. It's just very cyclical. Both, with same with that as far as homelessness, going back to homelessness and resources. I know there's a lot of things that donate to homelessness. And just wanted to say, what, is there anything in the pot that, okay, we're going to focus definitely on the housing. So we're going to definitely zone in. Now we find that not being educated in how to maneuver the health system is da-da-da-da-da, you know, which I'm like really supportive of, you know. So I've given you a lot of stuff on that.
I think I agree with everything you're saying. Healthcare is extremely complicated in the United States and here. And the story that you're talking about as far as somebody being on Medicaid and earning more and getting off, that's a story I hear every single day, right? And also for people that are, have been working, whether it's a teacher or a fireman, they have the same issues with insurance. Insurance is the bane of my existence. Like you have a high deductible, you have to get an MRI, but who has $3,500 ready to go to pay for that? Then you have the doctors that don't want the high deductible because they're paying, they don't want to be the bill collector for their patients. They just want to take care of patients. And then you have physicians that can't afford to take Medicaid because the reimbursement's so low. That's why you can't find, if you're on Medicaid, you can't find a provider. It's just like this, you know, it's, there's, it's the cart and the horse constantly.
Yes.
So we are trying to make intentional steps. And I think we've done a good job as far as providing healthcare. You know, Connecticut has the best wraparound services for Medicaid of any other state in the nation. It's unbelievable. If you're on Medicaid, you're, you know, Medicaid services in the state of Connecticut are probably better than some insurance where people are paying. And I know it's sort of like, well, if I'm earning too much, then I can't be on Medicaid. And I personally hate that. That's a federal issue. It's been a federal issue forever. I wish there was an easier sliding scale where people could slowly move up. And I do think that there's an intersection between homelessness and mental health and being able to, you know, find a job. And there are some great places that will help you with homelessness. That also, I know we do like a suit drive at the Capitol to try to help make sure that you have the appropriate clothing when you're going on an interview. And we also have that, those same issues that I've been working on closely with a women's prison as when you're coming out of prison and you've done your time and we're trying to give you a skill. And we just kind of dump you and say, here you go. But you don't have the support that you need to find a job and get to work. So those things are becoming, I would say, more transparent and there's more focus on them. I don't have all the answers or solutions, but I hear what you say and I agree with you that those are issues. And it's also pretty tough. You know, in eastern Connecticut especially, there's like one of me and you go to Bridgeport and there's four senators from Bridgeport. You're trying, you know, it's this uphill sort of battle. But, you know, I, I'm not discouraged. We just have to keep working at it, you know. I wish there was a crystal ball where things were totally different. But you come up with a good insurance bill. I had one for police officers, I'm just going to give you this as an example. The state of Connecticut, under the police accountability bill, makes our police officers go for a behavioral health check. If you are a police officer and they'll ask you, have you thought of suicide? And this happened to somebody locally. And the officer said, yes, I have. I've seen horrific things. Boop, you can't get life insurance anymore. So I said to the, I had a bill in for life insurance saying, oh my God, you can't, we're making them go. And now you're going to not let them have life insurance because they thought about it? They didn't do it. They got on medication and everything, they're better now. And I almost had that across the finish line, but the insurance lobby is so strong that they just shot, shot it down. So those are the things, you know, you try to fix those things. And then you have, you know, you're fighting with the insurance. And this particular individual, he is amazing. He's now a social worker. And he talks about how, once you're denied once, life insurance from someone, you can't get it from anybody else. Even if you go on, like the guy on TV that's like, buy life insurance from me. Everybody rejects you because the first thing it says is, have you ever been rejected? And if you're honest and say yes, then everybody else rejects you. So I'm like, so we're putting these people in a position where they, they're going to lose. And that's not right and we need to fix the law. You can't, it was actually, you can't discriminate because of blah, blah, blah. And I think we got it out of the Senate, but it just got killed in the House. So because the lobbyists and the insurance companies are really strong. So sometimes we try to do the right thing. Usually we're trying to do the right thing, that we think is the right thing, to push it across the finish line. And there's, nobody realizes sometimes that there's these externals, you know, lobbyists that are there to kill every good idea you have, so.
Well, two things off of this, and this will be hopefully my last thing, is I appreciate all that. And so I'll leave this up for my second. Talking about healthcare is, when we're talking about school-based health clinics, I'm like, I've done nursing for a long time and I was happy to see those come in. The only thing I would say is that I have heard pediatricians say, so we have a student that goes in there. They go in there for their vaccines or they go in there for something, something. And then they're going in there for physicals. So then all of a sudden they're coming in to see the pediatrician for something. And now the pediatrician has not seen them and hasn't realized blah, blah, blah's going on and blah, blah, blah. To me, it's a communication thing. That can be fixed easily. But still, it's kind of like, they kind of, I can't say I've spoke to all pediatricians, but some of them have felt in, when I was in that arena, especially working with younger children, is that, well, it makes it difficult for us. And then we have to go over this whole history thing. And I felt like, they didn't say it, but I felt like they were saying like, they were kind of discouraging. You know, like if they had a headache or something going on, that's good for school-based health clinic, but not to do your physicals and so forth and so on. Because they feel like things get missed. Although the, I mean, both sides, I think pediatricians, but the school-based.
It's really hard to find a pediatrician in eastern Connecticut. And, you know, the pediatricians do want you to go to get your vaccine because they can bill for that visit. I mean, that's just the nature of the beast. School-based health clinics provide great healthcare at one of the lowest costs. I want to expand the opportunity. One of the bills I had was, just for example, if Fitch High School's open in the evening, it's a full-blown clinic there. Why can't we have that open and have residents or clinicians that are coming that have big debt to pay off, have them moonlight in those clinics in the evening? If it's open for volleyball, it could be open to the public where I could go or you could go if I have a sinus infection and make good use of that school-based health clinic. They do take insurance. People don't think they do, but they do take insurance. If you don't have it, it's covered. And provide an opportunity, not only for new clinicians who are trying to attract here as a way to pay down their medical, you know, their schooling debt, but an opportunity for more access to healthcare. So I don't, I have not heard that from pediatricians. Thank you for sharing that. And we do deal with pediatricians often, you know, all the time, actually in public health. But that is absolutely a communication issue. It's easy. I mean, pediatricians offices, many of them are still using faxes, which to me is amazing. It's like, but to just have that, with, with medical records now, you would expect it to be sort of interchangeable where they could be able to go on and to access the information. So that's something that we can certainly work on if that's something that is an issue. But I would disagree. I think that, I know that we've done the data. If you have a child that has an asthma attack and you go to the school-based health clinic, I think it costs about $17, actually no, $27. If you have that child have to go to the ER, it's an $1,800 visit. So they are very affordable, really low cost. They do a great job. And we're funding them and I don't think of them as competition. I just think that we need to be better at communication. And if you have specific pediatricians that you can think of that are having that issue, please have them reach out and we'll see what we can do to sort of help that.
So my tailoring thing is with everything said and all this great information and all the hard work that you're doing, what would you say to people who listen on Zoom or when we go back out and talk to our constituents or anybody, people we work with? What would you say for them to do in order to help, like, you know, to move things along or to be more educated in it or, you know, what's happening at the legislative level? What would you say to our constituents now?
I'll take this one. I always say, reach out. Because there's a lot of things that, you know, even from pre, that we see in press and Facebook and like, they're like, this happened at the state Capitol today. That did not happen at the state Capitol today. So really reaching out and like, we can explain it to you. And we have the Office of Legislative Research and the Office of Fiscal Analysis as a nonpartisan state agency that we can get a nonpartisan information that's, hey, this is what's really going on. You know, always reach out, ask questions. You know, all of our emails are on our website and you can contact us at any time. Our office phone numbers are on there. So really just kind of reaching out. 99% of people who work up there are really good people and really want to do the right thing. So we're really, you know, always reaching out, always having a question. Feel free to ask a question. It's, we're, we're very responsive. So I think that's really one way of engaging with the public. And it goes back to what Counselor Norris said about grants. You know, if you have an idea, if you need funding for something, reach out to us because we can, we can always have those conversations.
Okay. So I want to close out. So we'll start with Representative Gajaskin, his final words.
Yeah, I think, I thank Counselor Piazza for kind of probing that question because that's what I was really going to say. Thank you all. I look forward to continued partnerships with you all and addressing, please reach out to our offices if you have any constituents that have some state issues. We're happy to help, whether it's, you know, depending on whose constituent it is. For Rep. Baumgartner and I, we're always connected to the right office. And here on grants, and thank you for your comments on the housing issues. And I look forward to a continued partnership.
Yes, I want to thank you all for your attention this evening. Really enjoyed the conversation. We've done this the last couple of years and I'm hoping, no matter the, what happens in the city of Groton's next chapter, that that continues with the council and the next mayor. I would also note, I, I think we all send pretty frequent email blasts. I send one out every week and that goes out on Friday. Also hold monthly coffee hours and, you know, together we meet with councils and I have town hall meetings as well. I'd encourage you all to, you know, certainly subscribe to those newsletters. So at a bare minimum, you know, what's going on, you know, with respect to state issues. For my newsletters, I try to include information on DOT projects as well. Even, I don't want to say as minor, but as minor as some road closures. It can come in handy sometimes for, for folks, veterans-related programs and also, you know, things relating to nutrition, making sure that families don't go hungry and knowing the resources you have. But I would say, you know, we are, I can only speak for myself, but I think, you know, the three of us have a great working relationship with the Groton Utilities lobbyist, Mark Tabella. I know he communicates with us very regularly about things relating to Groton Utilities. I'm a member of the Energy and Technology Committee. So I interface with him quite a bit, as well as CMX lobbyist, Tim Shea. I think that communication is really important, especially given a lot of the infrastructure demands of the city in the, in the coming years that will require a lot of collaboration with the state as well. And, you know, very grateful for the open line of communications that exists right now between the city and the town on that front as well. I would note, just within kind of the GU space, one thing that I think we should all be paying very close attention to is the issue of certain infrastructure not being readily available. That's really important to maintain the grid. Things as small as transformers, right? That those are things right now that we're seeing a shortage of across the country. And I think will have pretty significant impacts on Connecticut. I'm sure that's already happened here in Groton. But kind of work through those challenges. I know there's an effort to reshore a lot of the construction of transformers, for example, back in the US, but that's something we need to keep a close eye on because obviously we've got to keep the lights on in an affordable manner, which Groton Utilities has gone above and beyond by delivering a 9.5% rate reduction to their ratepayers at a time when ever-source ratepayers cannot say that. Where, you know, folks living in EverSource saw their rates doubling. So I think that's a testament again to the leadership here in the city, the model that you have in place and making sure that we protect the fiscal health of the utility moving forward as well and want to be a partner in that. So thank you, Mayor.
Just thank you for having us. I know it's, there's a lot of information. It's like, you know, drinking from a fire hose, so to speak. And it's, even if we met, we don't even know all the information. I mean, there's just so many bills and so many committees. So I think one of the best ways is to try to follow us on Facebook or if you subscribe, we try to do email blasts, as Representative Baumgartner has stated. He does a lot more coffee hours in town. I have nine towns, so I cannot do those coffee hours like he does. But we do have town halls. I'm doing one on 7/31 with Representative Howard at the Groton Public Library. And I used to talk about what happened in the legislative session, but most people want to ask questions, so we've turned it around. So I just let people ask questions. But if there is anything that, you know, you need, feel free to reach out, call us. We do return calls, we return emails. You know, sometimes if you ask a question that's super complicated, it's easier to pick up the phone and have a conversation. We are here, we're not scary. Don't feel intimidated by reaching out to us if you're listening. If you have a problem, please call us. I have people calling me about problems about their phone bill when they're in the hospital. So people call me for everything. I will try to help you. There's some problems that I cannot solve, especially the federal ones. The other thing that I think is important for people listening is, and I'm going to estimate, but I want to say 95% of the bills that we pass that are in this public acts book, maybe, go on consent. And that means that both Democrats and Republicans, the House and the Senate, have all weighed in and we all agree, there may be something we don't like or something we really like, but we all vote yes. And if you were really bored and were watching the last part of session, you can see towards the end, there's like a list of 50 bills that they're calling off and it's unanimous because we've all done the work together. We argue over the 5%, like the bad housing bill that they think is great. I'm just kidding. I had to say that because it was funny. You know, they saw the good, I saw the bad, you know. And so we argue over that 5%. But for the most part, the legislature is not like Washington DC. We are bicameral, bipartisan in our committees and we all really work together. Some of my best friends are Democratic senators. And I think that that's a testament that people don't hear enough, so I want everyone to know that. So feel free to reach out to us. You know, if you're Republican, you can reach out. So feel free to reach out to us. You know, if you're Republican, you can reach out to these guys. If you're a Democrat, you can reach out to me. We answer everybody. You don't have to be in our party. And we will help you as best we can to navigate the unnavigable legislature. It's tricky. And we invite you all to come up and see how things work or, or maybe in some people's opinion, don't work, but you can see what it's like. And during session, you can see the chaos and how things work. You know, many of our bills are, are done in the hallway where like, I was just on the phone with the representative from Greenwich today, plotting on how we're going to do this and this for, for the Seaport. So that happens all the time. I think people need to hear that, especially in the landscape that we are in, like nationally. I think it's important to hear that. So thank you for having us. We'd be happy to come back some other time. Thanks.
Thank you for coming out. Okay, we'll get it distributed. Yes, ma'am? You can leave it there. Okay, next, Public Works forklift purchase. Josh? Make sure the microphones on green.
Good evening. So I am here for the authorization and approval for the purchase of our new forklift. So I had watched the council meeting last week and I know that there were some questions regarding what we use it for and, you know, like the hours. So hopefully I can answer all them questions for you. So like the mayor had said, last meeting was some issues with our, our current forklift is finding parts. We have some brake issues with it. And the exhaust manifold has a leak. It's rotting out. So our concern is to replace that. You are going to have more bolts breaking than it's worth. It's going to turn, I'm going to guess and say, six to eight hour job into probably, you know, fourteen to sixteen hours. So the hours, we use the forklift roughly an hour per day. It's used daily for sure. And so, you know, that being a twenty-eight-year-old forklift, I think that it, it would be a good guess to say that it's probably close to the five thousand an hour mark, give or take a little bit. But we use it mainly for loading and unloading of trucks for deliveries from, you know, vendors, for the highway garage, City Hall, IT, Parks and Rec. They get stuff delivered to us on pallets for the ball fields and such. So that's just a small portion, but we use it also for moving around our plows and sanders. Mainly our sanders for our small mason dumps. We use it for moving catch basin tops that we have at our yard for, you know, upcoming projects. Blocks for the rebuild of catch basins. Our mechanic uses it very frequently for, you know, certain repairs such as like the garbage truck. We replaced a radiator in that a few years back. And we have an overhead crane in the garage, but beings, it's on the garbage truck. The garbage truck is very tall, so it doesn't work out too well. So it was done outside and used a forklift to remove the radiator from the truck. Also use it for, you know, hydraulic cylinder repairs. You know, we've got to take a cylinder off of a truck. They can be very heavy. So just, you know, moving them around, loading them into a truck to bring them somewhere to get repaired. Also our, our tailgates on our six-wheel dump trucks and ten-wheel dump truck, you know, those come off every winter to put our drop-in sanders on. The forklift is used to take them off and put them back on. So, I mean, I could, I could keep going, but I think that kind of gives a picture of what we use it for.
Okay, we'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, and thank you for coming.
Yeah, no.
I, so I'm obviously the one that, that pushed to ask the questions. And it wasn't because I think that we don't need a forklift. But as a counselor, I often get asked what things are for. So for example, you guys also have a street sweeper. And I can explain to someone what that's for because our previous Public Works Director, when it was purchased, went into, you know, detail about what we do with that and why we need it so badly. Obviously, it's an important piece of equipment. And so when we're approving money, I like to be able to explain why I voted yes on, on something. And the other thing with, with equipment in Public Works and specifically Public Works and Groton Utilities, we're always looking at, do we rent equipment? Do we buy equipment? Which one's cost-effective? So when you tell me, "We use this piece of equipment every day for an hour. This one for, is twenty-eight years old." That obviously makes sense to buy one and not to rent one. That wouldn't work.
Yes.
So again, to be able to have that explanation because we are the body that approves that funding, I think, in my opinion, we are responsible to explain that. And so it, it wasn't necessarily because it was, had nothing to do with whether or not, you know, obviously we need a forklift. But I think to have the information to pass on to residents and to say, "Yes, I vetted this. We absolutely need this because we couldn't operate the Public Works Department without it," I think is important. So I, I really appreciate you coming and explaining all that because it really does help. It's not just to spend time in meetings, which run longer than we want or, you know, that kind of thing. It is really important, I think, to show the residents that we are looking at every dollar that we spend and trying to save money wherever we can. So if you had come and said, "We use it once a month for three hours,"
Yeah.
then maybe the answer would be different. And we would say, "Well, that seems kind of silly to own one. Borrow Parks and Rec forklift." You know what I mean? Like, but that's not the situation here. So that's kind of my rationale of, of why I think that's important.
Just to touch on that with like, you know, you saying you use Parks and Rec's forklift. So, I mean, they, they do have forks for their Kubota. Now, the Kubota will lift, you know, a fraction of what the forklift will lift. You know, just so you have that in mind. I mean, it's kind of irrelevant, I guess, but, you know, just so you know.
But that's, like I said, that's information that residents who've never seen someone operate a forklift, they, they don't know that. You know what I mean? So I, it is valuable for us to have those explanations as people who are approving that money and to make sure that residents know that it, what service it's providing for them.
Yeah.
Because especially our Public Works Department is well-liked by the community. They, they really value that we have our own in-house Public Works. And, and so it's important that they know how everything operates. So thank you again.
Any other questions or comments on this? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you for looking at the video. I appreciate that. That's great work. And thank you for being here. And I do agree with Mayor, Deputy Mayor Depot on that. But what I want to add, having been a forklift operator in the military and in the civilian life, great use of the forklift, all the things you explained. Rock on. I love that. And, and I have seen one accident with a forklift. And it was in, it was in good repair, but a bolt did give, concrete blocks up high and just gave way. And thankfully, the operator was not injured. So totally get it, twenty-eight years old, we got bolts snapping, you know? But I understand your point. I agree with it. But I mean, you know, but great to know all the things you're using it for.
Yeah, I mean, that's just a small fraction.
I love that. Thank you.
Anything, anyone else? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of August fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
So moved. A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any motion carried on Ashley? Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Groton Utilities seawall, gravity sewer line relocation. Joe?
Hi, I'm Joe Pratt, the manager of Operations for Water and Wastewater. I'm just here to let you guys know why we needed a bypass at the seawall. The seawall construction was redesigned and the redesign went right where our gravity sewer is. So we needed to do the bypass so they could continue working. If we were to wait, you know, the longer we wait, the slower this project is. So we had them set up the bypass for the gravity line. The force main was already bypassed because that was going to be pretty close to where they're working. They went further out into the gravity. So they set up the bypass. It's two portable generators, I mean pumps, diesel with alarm system that we'll call if, if there's any problems, so.
Okay. Open the floor for discussion. Counselor Sheffield?
Yes, did we know this was coming as far as needing this bypass? Or we had to dig to locate?
No, the original design, we were going to be far enough away. They, they ran into some problems with the design. I, I think it was because they couldn't find ledge, so they ended up having to move or actually put their own ledge in there with concrete. So it's going to be in the road. So the whole sewer has to move.
Wow. And how long is that going to take for construction and all that? How?
I think the, the amount that we did it for was for six months. So hopefully it will, it'll get us to the end of the project. And that will be putting a new sewer line in also, and manholes.
Okay, so it's the sewer line and, and then the rest of it is well combined, should be six months
Yeah.
for completion.
Right. Because while we're doing the construction, after they finish theirs, then we have to put the pipe in the ground. And so that'll take time and you have to bypass while that's getting done also.
Oh, okay.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to clarify, so the work is already done?
The bypass is set up, yes.
And the bypass is temporary or permanent?
It's temporary.
So it's temporary until they build the wall? And then will there be additional utility work needed that is also not in the original plans?
Correct. It'll be putting the new pipe in.
Okay.
So we're going to have to relocate that pipe, which is, the design has already been done where it's going to go. So that, that work will be getting done also.
And how are we paying for that?
It's coming out of utilities, out of the sewer budget.
And so it's going to be in budgeted funds from the Sewer Department?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So...
Let me, let me answer your question a little further. So this is the, with the new design, this will address both your issues. With the new design, the bottom had to go into the road more. So we needed to, the gravity drain needed to be relocated in order to, and, and in order to do that, we needed to do the bypass. Okay? Once the wall is completed and that's being done, and that's another project with other funds, then this gravity drain and the force main will be put back into the road. So, go ahead.
I have a couple more questions. So when were we aware that we would need to do the bypass?
Not, not too long ago. The design came out and they were saying, "Your, your sewer line is in our way now." So if you want us to keep working, we need to do a bypass now. Or we'll, we'll leave and then we'll have to come back. And we, we felt that it would hold up the project.
Right. So is that a week ago, four weeks ago, two months ago?
I'd say less, around a week and a half ago. The bypass was put in last, last, did I go down there, last Friday, Thursday?
So that was going to be my next question is when was the work done? So the work was done like three days ago Friday or the eighteenth?
The last, yeah, last, what is that? The last Thursday.
The twenty-fourth?
Yes.
So I guess I'm a little bit confused because I feel like we got a, um, one of the recent approvals, we, we were given information from Public Works about this project and the revised plan. And at that time, they mentioned the sewer bypass, that we would have to, the revised plan included a sewer bypass. And that was more than a week and a half ago. So my, obviously this work needs to be done. That is not in question. My question is, there are, obviously there's a provision to approve emergency projects or emergency items, which is what happened here. And the Utility Commission, obviously you were able to go to the Utility Commission for this, but then it didn't come to us first. And over the eight years I've been here, sometimes we inch towards our policies and procedures kind of pushing, pushing on the line of, could this have been brought to the council? Did we know about it beforehand? I'm not a huge fan of using the emergency procedures unless absolutely necessary, which again, obviously this work is necessary. That's not what I'm saying. But if there is a way to bring it to the council first, that would be better.
Yeah, that would, that's the best case.
At least in this case, it may have come up all of a sudden that it need to be done quickly. But I believe the council was made aware that it would need to be done in some capacity previous to the timeline. I'm not saying the utility was because it was in Public Works at the time. So I just, my caution is that I am wary of this becoming a habit. I'm not saying it's going to because this project obviously is its own thing and the sewer bypass needed to be done. Again, not a question. But I just want to express my caution with approving emergency items that maybe could have come to us administratively and not had to go through this emergency provision. To my point earlier that I made to, about transparency to residents, this project in particular is under a lot of scrutiny. So when a resident tomorrow comes to me and says, "Why didn't you ask more questions?" or whatever, you know what I mean? I, I, I feel that I am accountable for every time I vote for money to be expended. So I need to be able to explain why this was an emergency purchase, which there is information here and you gave us information. But to me, I want to limit those instances where the question can come up. Should we maybe have known about this earlier? Should this maybe have come up earlier or something like that? I, my thought too is in this type of instance where we maybe know it's going to go to the Utility Commission and not come to the council, that maybe the council can be informed to attend the Utility Commission meeting to see the presentation there because that might have been a possibility. I know that the commission meetings are during the day. I've attended many of them. But, and, but sometimes, you know, we can't make it. But to be maybe given that opportunity in a situation like this where it is an emergency, so then at least we can see the presentation. And in my experience, the Utility Commission asks very good questions and a lot of times more detailed questions than we ask here because some of them are experts. And so I think that might be helpful too, or to get a transcript or something additional in this instance, I think would be, would be good. And I think residents would appreciate it because, to my point earlier, I do like to be able to explain everything to residents and especially when we're, we're authorizing money for something. And this project in particular, people are excited to get the wall built. So I know that they're anticipating updates and what's happening and they want to know that things are moving along and being done correctly. So I just want to ensure that I'm expressing that. But again, to close it all out, I get that this absolutely needed to be done. And so that's all.
So when this was discussed with the council, we knew that we were going to need to do this. We did not know when. We did not know the cost. And we did not have a plan. So once all those came to fruition, we then had it and we acted on it so that we could continue moving the project forward. So that should answer your question. So, that should answer your question.
Can I ask a clarifying question to you? So, was the delay because we didn't have the quote or we didn't know when it needed to be done?
Quote. We had a quote recently.
Yeah, when we got the quote, we brought it to the UC.
So, the limiting factor was that we didn't have a quote yet?
We didn't know exactly what, they had to do the design of the bypass and let us know what they were going to do and it had to be approved.
Okay, so when we got the quote, we then didn't have enough, a lot, enough time to put it through the, it's like 45 days or something, the cycle to get it approved by both. So, the quote was the limiting factor? That's helpful, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? May I take a motion to move this mayor and council meeting of August 4th, 2025?
So, moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. All right, thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, Bill? We'll start with the power outage review. This is informing.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Counsel. I wanted to bring you up to speed on a, an event that we had regarding a power outage that was on July 1st. And I'll start from the beginning, give you a quick summary on it. And I'll have some time for questions, should you wish, and then I'll move into a couple of things that we need. So, roughly 4:30 in the morning, we received a trouble call that there was an outage. We responded and so first let me say, our primary substation is Buddington Station. That's right by the Honda Motorcycle Shop, Buddington 184. The second most important substation that we have is Trails Corner. That's on Biquanik Road. And it's really right there for our key substations because it feeds five 35,000 volt circuits up towards Electric Boat and Pfizer. So, those are two key customers as well as local distribution for homes, residences, businesses, all through the city. Okay? So, we got a call, we had an outage. The guys responded and found that the 300 line was out. So, again, I mentioned those two substations. It's important to know that there are two feeders running from Buddington that feed Trails Corner. So, 300 and 305. Okay, so we got a call, 305, 300 line was down. We did some research, we found that an Osprey had landed and built a big nest on the 300 line up just not too far where it crosses 184. So, we identified that, made the circuit safe, went and did the repairs, dismantled the nest. And they're huge nests. And then we, later on in the day, about 4 o'clock, we were able to re-energize that circuit. We went back to Buddington Station and the guys closed the 300 breaker, which energized the 300 line going into Trails again. So, we're back with two feeders. Roughly five minutes later, we had a fault. So, on the electric bus that's inside of the substation, a fault, it's like a short circuit. So, one of the phases to ground. That fault was so bad that it ended up tripping out the 300 line again. And then it also took down the 305 line. That made all of Trails Corners dead. So, we lost all power going to Electric Boat, Pfizer, all of the residences. So, we responded down to Trails Corner, did a quick assessment of the facility that's down there. And we saw a significant amount of damage. So, we made a determination that we would not be able to use that substation to re-energize the city, Electric Boat and Pfizer until we really dug into it and then made safe anything that was going to cause us to trip again. The guys spent from 4 o'clock up until through the whole night till midnight. What we had to do was, we had never lost that substation before. We had to design and engineer reroutes for all of the circuits going all the way around with not utilizing Trails Corners. I had all of the line crew, the substation guys, all of our engineering, our customer service. We all came together, came up with a plan, switching and tagging procedures. But the win for it was, in an eight-hour period, we're able to re-energize everybody. And honestly, it was, I was thrilled that the performance, that the team all came together and did. So, that was all Tuesday and the 1st. Wednesday, we got down, looked at the equipment that was down there on the substation. What, you know, what could we do to possibly get some of this back up? We made a determination that cell four, so there's four buses in that substation, 1, 2, 3, 4. Bus 4 was where we took the big hit. It was a big arc flash, bunch of damage. We did a bunch of testing. We ripped out mostly the internals to the cabinet with a feeder. The 300 feeder came into bus, bus 4. Got into it, started digging into it, did a bunch of testing and made the determination that we could possibly fire up bus 1, 2 and 3 and possibly restore a portion of that substation. We spent quite a bit of time testing. We waited till Thursday morning, we came in, finished up all of the testing. We re-energized bus 1, 2 and 3. We restored power back to that station from all of the workarounds that we had. So, we got that station pretty much back online with the exception of bus 4 where the damage was done. Bus 4, looking at the damage, the feeders, that 300 line that came in, each of the conductors in there are probably almost a two-inch diameter. We need to replace those. And then inside of the cabinet, the bus work, which is really the copper bars where the electric, the wire comes in, hits the copper bar, and that's what jumps around for all you circuit breakers, that took severe damage. So, what the next phase is for us, what's left, I still them down the 300 line. So, I really have that substation, Trails Corners, up and running on one feeder. So, normal operation is always to be N plus 1. You always want to have a backup should something happen. Right now, I'm running on bus 1, with just that one feeder, the 305 line is coming in. So, we're doing a little bit of finger crossing and, you know, monitoring it. The guys are inspecting the lines much more frequent just to make sure that we don't impact our key customers and our residences again. So, we started calling around, so that was Thursday, we got it up. We started calling around to get wire. We spent over a week and a half trying to find wire. I think you heard Representative Baumgardner talk about circuit breakers, transformers and that. We had a very, very difficult time getting wire. Nobody had it, nobody could get it. Most of them were talking a lead time of six months. We ended up finding one company that had wire on hand. We wrote up a quick purchase order, an emergency work, purchase order, out to them. We delivered the PO to them. By the time they got it, they sold the wire. We spent several more days trying to find wire. We ended up finding West Corp was able to provide it for us. They had it, they'd hold it for us for 24 hours. That's honestly how it is right now for material. We got a PO off to them, they received that and then delivered the wire. So, I have the wire in hand now. The guys can start, I can rip out the old conductors. It really comes from an erector set down there, goes underground and comes up into the substation. So, we're going to rip that out and try to pull a new wire in. So, the cost for that wire, I'm asking, so, we had to purchase it. Again, it's back to an emergency purchase. The cost for the wire was $83,636. And I'm asking for a 10%, 10% contingency on that. That will cover all of the lugs, any hardware, any other additional pieces that I need to get that in place. I'm not saying that I'll consume all of that, but it's just in case, whatever I need, right? So, the total cost for the wire will be $91,999.60. I spoke to you briefly about the bus work that's in the inside. We called up the original manufacturer for the substation. It's Powell. Powell came out and take, took a look at it. They still, the person that designed the switchgear is still employed by them. It was built and installed in 2001. The guy is still there, still has the design. They came out, walked it down, looked at it. We just received a proposal for that last week. The cost of that is going to be $499,932. 10% contingency on that as well, which is, totals me up to $549,950, $25.20. I have not moved forward on that. We wanted to talk with you on that. I had to get the wire, it truly was an emergency. It was, we were at great risk without it. We had that. I'm asking for you tonight, should you be willing to allow me to generate a purchase order to get that going? So, it's going to take them three weeks, three weeks to manufacture it. It's going to take them another two weeks to install it. So, the sooner I can get going on that, the better. And again, please note that there's quite some urgency with this. I'm down to one feeder going into the substation. And again, it's my number one substation for the, if I was to lose that 305 line again, again, we spent eight hours going through it the first time. Sure, we'd be, we would be better at it, but it's still going to be a six-hour endeavor. There was a lot of switching. We had a lot of coordination with Electric Boat and Pfizer. We also had to work with C-Mech because we ended up having to run the portable generators that they have to feed into the grid. If you look at, there's two generators right outside of the operations building at Groton, Groton Utilities. There's also two down on Bridge Street that you see off in the back by the train tracks. They were able to feed back into the grid just to make sure that we had enough power. Because we really did a lot of things that were really close where we were afraid that we were going to go into overcurrent, a trip a breaker out. So, we didn't want to make something worse by trying to, you know, resolve what we had. I'm open to questions.
I'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I do have a few questions. And I, I realized that I did know this was an emergency purchase too. I wasn't necessarily trying to rail against emergency purchases. Obviously, emergencies happen and we need to fix them. And unfortunately, they mostly happen in the utility department because those are the volatile, that's the most volatile thing. But so first, thank you very much to all of our staff. Because even, people were frustrated that their power was out. But I did hear a lot of people who either were physically out and saw the workers out, obviously, working very hard. Also, the weather wasn't great that day. So, they were working under kind of horrible conditions to get the power back up. And I know several thank yous were sent, you know, to me to pass on to your department because a lot of people in the community did realize how tough that whole situation was despite obviously frustrating for everyone. But, so thank you guys so much for your hard work and I know that that was a long day for everybody. So, a few questions on the, the bus?
Sure.
Purchase thing. So, that piece of equipment or setup, when would we normally have looked at replacing that?
So, that's a great question. So, one of the things I look at too is, you know, when I had Powell down here, I said, "What's the life expectancy of these things?" So, he says, "Honestly, can be 20 to 50 years depending on the environment that it's in, the maintenance that you do, are you maintaining everything?" Sure, we do breaker testing and we do transformer testing, oil samples from the transformer and a lot of things like that. And we look for, that type of work is predictive, right? To try to stay ahead of it. You don't want, you don't want to run to fail. You want to try to catch it just in time, right? So, that's really where we want the utility to go these days. That's a big driver for me, that's important to me. I was, we're concerned too. So, the location of that substation is down there at Birch Plain Creek. It's moist down there, the ground's moist. We had floods down there before when you had storms come in where the water actually came into the substation. It was actually below the building but right there. So, what I look at now too is, sure, I might be able to get 40, 50 years out of that thing. But I think what I'm going to have to do is much more, heighten the frequency of the maintenance that we do, right? We might have to get in there and clean instead of every other year. We might have to get in every year or maybe even more so. So, that's where I'm at with that. And I also looked at, so that substation when it was built, 2001, they made, Powell has made several enhancements to their design for that now too. So, they do a lot of things differently down there now. Heaters, they place heaters throughout the whole, the duct really goes, the water, the electrical power comes in on one side, the duct goes up, goes over to the other side of the building and energizes the second side, right? So, but to get there, that bus is in a duct, you know, an enclosed metal enclosure, right? So, they trap moisture. So, they're, one of the things they're looking at doing now, and it will be included in this section, is they install heaters. And the heaters, you know, will take care of the moisture that's in there, right? So, we won't, no, no longer have to battle moisture in there. So, that's, there's a lot of things coming to it. But same thing with determinations where buses really just copper bar. And every time that it makes a 90 or turn, you know, it's bare copper, they bolt it together. You have, you know, bolts going through it. A lot of, the old style is taping them up where moisture gets inside of that tape. And that's what we're finding. When we opened up the sections, that came out bad. You could see there was some oxidation in there, right? So, the new way is they have like a vulcanized termination. So, they'll, they'll do that and they put these, these higher grade covers on, on any of the terminations where they turn. That along with the heaters, it will be much better. So, I'm looking at a couple of things for that. This, again, this is just bus 4, or that we're working on here. There's three others. While, right after this happened, I had our test guy go down with his infrared gun. The bad connections give off heat. So, we did a quick scan of that to make sure we were good there. We also have another substation that was built about the same time. It's over by operations, same manufacturer. We went through that one, made sure that that was okay. So, this was truly the one particular spot that was problematic.
The other thing that we're looking at is I've asked us to take a look at, from a resiliency point of view, the ability to be able to recover in between failures. But also, we know that Electric Boat is building more and they're going to have more power draws. So, we're looking, we're going to be looking and having some engineering studies. One, to forecast what our future power projections are. And do we have the capability at this point or do we need to enhance? And then the second thing is, do we need to either one, harden this location at Trails or do we need to consider building a new substation somewhere else? So, that is something we're going to be looking at in the near future, probably in the next year or two, to get engineering studies so we can take a look at that.
So, a new substation, what we see right now for that particular one, it's $12 million, $14 million. And keep in mind, every year, it's like a 10% climb. It's just the way things are going right now. It's hard to forecast, very difficult. Not only can you not get the material, it's almost like a bidding war for the wire and things like that.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you. So, so just to clarify, the one that we have has been looked at and is not repairable?
That's correct. No, it was horribly, it truly blew up.
Oh.
Yeah.
And then both of these items, well, first of all, also, thank you for, you answered one of my other questions, which is, what are we doing to make sure that this doesn't happen again? Because that was another question I got asked, is, is this going to keep happening? And to your point, we've already checked the other stations for similar issues and we've reviewed all that. So, that's very helpful information because that is what I'm going to be telling people who ask me. Both of these items are non-budgeted, correct?
Non-budgeted, correct.
How is this going to impact your budget for the year?
I'm mindful of that. So, we had several capital projects that we're looking at doing this year. We're going to have to go back and see. So, that's why we put it, I worded it, "non-budgeted cash" because I did budget for it in expense and I did budget for it in capital, right? So, I don't know yet, I don't know yet. So, we're really looking at everything. There was a couple of things. We had a couple of big projects for Wyman Gordon. We're going to upgrade the voltage down there for them. That system, I might have to defer that, I don't know yet. But that's an expensive one that might offset the cost for this. Several other things that we're looking at as well. I don't have that answer, but it's something that I'm looking at right now is refreshing all the numbers. Where are we at? What's the total for this cost? When we're all done, it's going to be $800,000, you know, so, you know, 800, 900. So, you know, what are the things that perhaps, what would be logical, the best things for us to defer should we have to defer something? So, what's... So what's the, what's the most critical? What's the least risk? And then go with those.
Is.
But of the three divisions, electric, water, and sewer, electric has some more reserve from the capital side to absorb some of this. We're still going to have to look at, what are we not going to do this year? But we're not going to have to go out with emergent bonding or anything like that.
That's my next question.
In order to do this.
That's correct.
Okay, so there's not, uh, this wouldn't be something that we would be look, looking to add more bonding or anything?
No, no, no. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're most welcome.
Counselor Sheffield.
The copper wire, are we, is that imported or is that domestic copper?
It's domestic. They fabricated around here, yeah.
Because I wasn't sure if there's a shortage of copper per se that we can't.
Yeah, you know, the materials, everything post-COVID is really, the prices, you know, it's, it's, I've had, you know, quoted prices good for, you know, 24 hours. Sometimes it's like that. This particular manufacturer, we're getting it from their on a, they are, let's see, they're on a source well cooperative purchasing contract. So they are good. So it's, it is like the best price. And we were fortunate to get them to have something available. If, I'm not sure if somebody canceled an order or whatever, but we just, you can't afford to just keep, to buy, you know, $100,000 roll of wire and keep it in the yard just in case, you know? So it's getting better. And actually, we have, during this event, we actually reached out to Norwich Public Utilities. You know, they're a partner, you know, we, if we lose a transformer and they can help us, or we do the same thing. We reciprocate should they need. Also reached out to Eversource with this wire. We really were reaching, reaching, and we were fortunate to get it. And I pushed through an emergency purchase for that. Yeah. All right. So the opportunity came and that was it.
Any other questions? Counselor Piazza.
Thank you, Mayor. Great work. I appreciate all the people that came out of their beds to do this. So we could sleep nicely. And just looking into all of it. So I think in a way, it's a blessing that it did happen, you know, because then instead of, and then it happens and then maybe we didn't have the money. Maybe you do a couple of projects and then you don't have the money. So I think it's kind of a blessing that, that this happened. But, um, two things. So what does BUS actually stand for? What's the acronym for?
The what?
B U S.
B U S. That's actually, that's what it is. It's the bus. So if you were going to, I don't know if you've been into your electrical panel in your home.
Yeah.
Even that has copper bus coming in. So your wires come in, they land on like a lug. You crank, you know, you tighten that down.
Yeah.
And then the bus is in there and that's what your breakers snap into.
Yep.
It's a copper bus.
Okay.
So think of that on a, on a super large scale.
Yeah.
Because we've got the breakers that are in that substation down there. Each of them are, they sit this high, they're yadeep and that wide, right? So they're, they are huge.
Gigantic.
And then, you know, they rack them in, they rack them out. So a bus that's in there is honestly like that. Imagine like a flat bar or a round bar that big.
Yeah.
And it, it goes throughout the whole substation. So the fault that we had, you know, Deputy Mayor mentioned, you know, how bad was it? It literally just blew a hole. There's a hole about that large.
Okay.
From the flash. So.
Vaporized that copper. Now the wires coming in, we're talking about a wire that big around.
Yeah, correct.
So I mean, it's not like what we're used to is seeing. I mean, this is a huge wire.
And we know copper is very expensive.
35,000 volts.
Yeah. Yeah. Just when you're explaining the story, it kind of reminds my son's age back. And it's just on a smaller level was today, same thing.
Yeah.
We don't have this, they go out.
Yeah, yeah.
Flip the breaker, blow it. And it just as we went, we got, the job got bigger and bigger and bigger.
So we're always looking to, to harden the system. So one of the things we have, a couple of things we're looking at now. I want to steer the team away from a run to fail type of an attitude or a maintenance plan. We want to get into the predictive maintenance. So much more thermography, oil analysis, cleanings, all of that stuff. So initially, you start off with the manufacturer's recommended maintenance, but there are so many more tools out there now. Ultrasonics where you can actually hear noise where perhaps a bad connection's chattering. You can, you can predict it and see it and get it just in time. So that's where we're, we're swinging over to.
And City Works is going to help us track all this.
So absolutely right. So Trimble City Works, we're rolling that out. I have money approved this year for the, and we're starting in the substation site, planning on starting in Huntington. That's the biggest one. It's the newest one. You get everything in. Once you start gathering the data, you see the trending, things are getting worse. You know, it's, it's so, it's priceless. So.
Yeah.
That's what you want.
Sounds like a great plan. My other question is, or maybe statement to it, so the osprey nest, it starts out with the osprey nest. So, I mean, animals, wildlife is my heart. But with that said, um, is there, I think, due to deforestation that we have, you know, them landing their nests many places? What's the plan for this, to prevent that happening? Like, so are we building things on top of these places? So it doesn't happen again? Or we just can't avoid it? Or?
You're more than welcome to come over to operations, right? So if you come over to operations, you look, there's a network of poles all through there.
Yeah.
And I'll bet you that we have six to eight osprey nests built up there on poles. So if they utilize those, they don't try to manufacture something out of a pole, right? There's other ways too. So you look at running wire instead of bare copper, you can put insulated wire. So we're looking at doing that. We have a repair where the wires come across 95. I think there was an automotive accident. Somebody hit the wires years back. So we have a small repair there to do too. We're going to put in the insulated wire. There's a lot of different things. We have cones up there. But it's, that's why we've got two feeders coming into that station, right? We lost one. And you know what? We recently did the relays down there. So the system worked. We just updated the relays down there, put these brand new Switzer relays in. The, the osprey took out the 300 line and everybody saw a blip. That's it. So the people that were on that line, within a millisecond, it switched over to the 305 line and it was back up. So the system works. So we're looking at things like that as well. So hardening the system and making it more reliable.
And I do think the, looking at the, with the moisture and so forth.
Yeah.
I mean, unfortunately.
Yeah.
You know, maybe another substation, but I mean, with the flooding we have down there.
I know.
You know, it's.
No, it's, it brought, it heightened my awareness down there, so.
Yeah. I think it's something definitely to look at. I'm sure you guys.
I'm, we're on it.
Deputy Mayor Depot.
I just wanted to add that I specifically asked for a detailed explanation of what happened during the power outage. So I want to thank you in the mayor's office and Commissioner Zuliani for being here. I, I do think that the residents really appreciate it when they can know what happened, why it happened, and how we're going to prevent it going forward. So I just want to say thank you for, for doing that. Because I do think it's, it's super helpful information. Because even for me, if there's a piece of it that I forgot, we can go back on the TV, on YouTube and re-watch it. Or send it to people, just this clip of the explanation.
Sure.
It's very helpful. So thank you.
You're most welcome.
Anyone else?
Oh, the, we're hoping, if I could, I was asking to get your approval to, with the purchase order.
All right. I'm getting ready to do my job.
You got it. Thank you.
Well, you're only getting these moved to mayor and council. You're not getting them approved tonight. You know that, right?
Okay. I just, all right. It's just, I'm trying to manage risk, that's all.
I understand, but my communication was very clear of what this cow does. I didn't have a special mayor and council to have this approved.
Okay.
Okay. So for the MCM wire cable, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of August 4th, 2025.
So moved. Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion, motion carries. And for the new bus duct and equipping breaker cell, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of August 4th, 2025.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay? That's it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, economic development resilience update. This is informing. Sierra.
You all right?
Yeah. Sound it worse than it was. Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to pull up a quick presentation. And pardon me if most of my attention is going to be focused here. There's a lot of images and things that I want to show you guys and kind of talk through. Um, Danny, do you want me to share this via Zoom or I'm showing it on here? It's fine.
This is fine.
All right. So I'm here to give you guys an update on, oopsies. On the Five Corners Stormwater Project. Um, right now, we are in an assessment phase of the Five Corners area that we plan to wrap up at the end of this year and then potentially move forward into looking at recommendations. So for this project, the city has partnered with the Nature Conservancy to manage this project. And we've hired Hufus and O'Neills as our engineers. Some things that we have seen, this is an image of John and Eastern Point, John Street and Eastern Point Road. As you can see, that bubbler is overflowing with water, just kind of speaking to the stormwater runoff issues that we have in the area. This is our project area that is within these blue lines. Primarily, we are looking at Five Corners, but we wanted to make sure that we understood where the water is coming from and where it's going within this entire area. We are looking at the flood vulnerability of this area. In this depiction, the darker the blue, the more flood risk there is in that area. We've also looked at heat vulnerability. The darker the red, the more heat exposure that our residents or commuters have in the neighborhood as well. And these are some more images. These stairs right here are on Hamilton Street. So you can see the water cascading down those during a storm. And we also have this picture here is the retaining wall along Thames Street that abuts Electric Boat's property a couple of years ago. Received so much water that it actually failed. And the city and town actually had to partner with the Electric Boat to do some repairs to that wall. So with our work thus far with Hufus and O'Neal, we had them do some stormwater modeling for us. Again, this is looking at property, project area is within pink. This is looking at the watershed, where's the water coming from? And the arrows are starting to depict for us kind of how those water flows go. These dark blue circles are where we, our stormwater model has projected is the most flooding that is occurring. And we'll see these more as we get forward. So here's an image of the stormwater model. We are looking at a 100-year prediction. But we have noticed that within the past decade or so, Groton has experienced 100-year storm event more frequently than we have in the past. Just to give you a little bit of orientation, this is the corner of, we call this Four Corners. It is where Thames, Paquonic, Eastern Point, and Smith Street meet. These are the flood model projections zoomed in. As you can see, this, where this arrow is, is where those staircases flow. So you can imagine Hamilton Ave, you have water flowing from there. Oak Street and down Paquonic Road kind of all feeds into this system and meets at this corner. So, one thing that we would like to do within these models is try to verify this information. We have shared this at a few, at Open House, a couple of workshops that we have had. To validate these, we are looking for images, whether they are past or presence of any of the storm events that are going on. You can either email those to me or you can join the discussion on Greater Groton. Also, we looked at Mitchell Street. So this is Mitchell from Five Corners. And then you can see that this is our darkest area of blue, right along Mitchell Street, right in between Carins and where Pizza Today is. It's definitely air that we need to look at. And then you can kind of see how this water within other areas, the parking lots, the private properties along and back of Sacred Heart and along Paquonic Road of us starting to look at ways of how we start to address the flood of this, the flooding that's happening in this neighborhood. So things that we have heard through this so far, some of our major events, in-person events has been an Open House in May and a walkshop that we did on June 3rd. Some of the things that we've looked at or have heard from the community is to look at bump out opportunities within the road that can also serve as traffic calming as we're looking at some stormwater mitigations. We're also looking at, um, the community noted flooding at Fort Griswold, flooding down Baker Ave, by the entrance of Sacred Heart, Sacred Heart and their parking lot and along Shanacossack Road. We were also asking community members to identify potential areas to plant trees. They noted trees along Rainville, down at the Thames River Heritage Park, the water taxi landing site next to the PAF's facility. More trees at the cemetery. And then the community was just noting the lack of shade that is along our sidewalks in this neighborhood. So on June 3rd, we did a walkshop. This just depicts the routes that we took on that walkshop. During the walkshop, we were really looking for areas and opportunities to either plant trees or start to look for green infrastructure opportunities. We did this on both public and private land. So you can notice within here, we're actually at the Riverfront Children's Center for this one. You, their parking lot already has kind of a bi, some, kind of like a garden area here. It doesn't really treat itself as a retention pond, but that is an opportunity potentially that we can work with them on. Also, it outlines, they had some parking spaces within their parking lot. They had some extra pavement that were not used for parking. Those are also areas that could potentially be used for bio swells or other remediations. And then just noting that there is some space along the edge in between the parking lot and the actual Riverfront, the building that could be an opportunity for either trees or some other type of plantings. We've also, we're looking at the public right of ways. So this image on this side is coming down Smith Street. There's excess pavement that is not used for parking that could be a potential opportunity. And we've also noticed that at the, at that Four Corners where Paquonic, Paquonic Thames, Eastern Point and Smith meet, especially coming off of Thames into Eastern Point, there's some excess paved area that is not used for parking that could be a potential opportunity as well. So we are still looking for way, what people are experiencing. We still want to understand flood and heat exposure within this neighborhood. The best way to do that is to join the discussion on Greater Groton. I got a QR code and the link here for you guys to do that. In addition to the experiences, again, we are looking for those photos. And if you just have general ideas of potential locations for trees or that we can start to look at, where some of these opportunities can go. Just wanted to share a few examples of some green infrastructure. So I just like these images because it starts to break down kind of what it looks like under the road. So it's like, okay, we're, can install tree planters, rain gardens, bio swells, do things with the piping, et cetera. But kind of what does that really start to look like? Buy retention planters. Here are some examples. Bio swells, filter strips, or bump outs. We've also talked about subsurface storage systems. We have a couple of property owners that are going to be doing some development in the near future. This is something that they can start to look into. Also, people who already have parking lots but are having major issues with stormwater runoff, these are also some options for them as well. And then we have been talking about, of course, pavement opportunities within this. Part of this project involves tree plantings. So we have been out in the community this spring to do, to conduct those plantings. We have done 25 tree plantings to date and we are preparing for about 25 more this fall. We are maxed out of what we can do for our grant allowance of trees planted this year, but we definitely need volunteers. And our team is looking to secure additional funding to do more plantings through another grant program. Just some benefits of trees. They help treat and improve the water quality via the filtration through their roots. They help manage large volumes of runoff. They help increase our urban canopy, which you really need that shade down there in the Five Corners neighborhood. And the added benefit of adding for beautification. And the, um, added benefit of adding for beautification and, um, could also help with some traffic coming. So some draft, very early on, design concepts that, um, we started to come up with for this project. So, again, this is the images kind of showing the, um, large, um, road widths and no parking within these zones. So if we go down, this is at, this house is at the corner of Smith and, yeah, Smith and Allen. And so you can see over here, they're talking about an infiltration planter potentially, and that is kind of what that could potentially look like on that road. We're also looking at doing, um, some work at the Smith and Allen Corner Park. Um, they're just pointing out there's no trees along here. Um, the runoff from the parking lot, um, dips down this way. There's a walking path, um, out in the back, and then the parking lot is downstream from, um, the road. So that could potentially look like having a bio swell here, adding some trees, and maybe doing some other, um, landscaping or decorative items there. Again, this is looking at coming down Smith Street, um, road width, no parking, and what that can potentially look like if we were to do something there. Um, going back to parking lot retrofits, this is that image that we saw earlier, basically where I'm standing in Beth. This is not a actual parking space, so this is an opportunity, um, that could be that we can install something. We know that there's other par, um, private parking lots that also have, it's just completely paved and the mark, markings are there for the parking, but then they have all this excess paving that we could actually be, um, using for something. This is another example, um, over by the Electric Boat Lot where we actually really don't know what this is too. Um, it is in the middle of their parking lot. Um, or not really in the middle, but kind of off to the side, but no cars, um, or bikes park here, which is really just extra, um, paved space. So again, looking at that, that could be a, um, bio retention, um, planter. And also another, or a bio swell in this case. Um, so for upcoming events, um, our team will be at City Day. Um, we are doing another pollinator plant giveaway, and we are also looking to engage with community members on this project. Um, also on Thursday, August seventh, we will be hosting our second community design charrette that will be here at the municipal building, um, where we will start to get into those preliminary designs and talk about, um, potential alternatives. Um, also on September eleventh, we will have our third design charrette, and that will kind of really start to, we're really trying to work through those concept designs. Um, again, at the end of this year, we're trying to have a clear idea of what are some concept designs that we can, um, move forward and then secure funding so we can actually start some engineering work to, um, make those plans a reality. Um, and then on October seventh, we are hosting, um, we put together a stakeholder co, um, committee group to review the plans from this. So we will be presenting our final, um, plans to them for some final edits and, um, feedback from them as well. Um, a few things that are not in this power, um, presentation that I did want to share, there are two other collaborations that, um, the city is working or partnered with. Um, one is through the Connecticut NER, it's called MyCoast. Um, basically, they are setting up an app where community members can take images of flooding that is happening in their neighborhood and send it into that platform. That platform, um, it collects all different types of information, the date, the time, what's going on, the weather, high tide, low tide, all the information is collected within that database. And then we can use that as a city to start to make decisions about what we need to do, um, based off of those images to start to address some of these concerns. We've also, and mayor and deputy mayor, were at attendance at a rollout of that application, so you guys could add a little bit more if you want to when that comes. Um, and also, we have partnered with Circa, um, who's also down at Yukon Avery Point to install three heat sensors in the city. We have one at Five Corners, um, one at the fire station on Broad Street, and another at the, um, Thames River Magnet School on Brandyke Avenue. So those, we, those sensors are connected to a live database that give us the, um, human feel of what the weather actually, what the weather feels like to a human person in, in those, um, areas. So again, that data can be used as we, um, start to identify places for trees or, um, different shade mechanisms and things to try to keep the, our community cool during, during heat waves. And.
So open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I, I have seen most of that because I've been, I've attended the Zooms as often as I can. Um, and I think that I do have some photos of flooding in like an old iPhone backup, because I tried to find them, because I had, um, talked to like the nature conservancy and I was like, I know I have some somewhere, because I remember taking them, but, um, I have to go back and, and try to look for them. But, um, I just wanted to say the, also, the rollout of the tree planting, you know, a lot of this is a long-term project, but, um, I just want to encourage more things like the tree plant, planting project that are kind of incremental and we can do while we're doing the rest of the project, because I think the community has responded well to the tree planting, because it is actionable now to, um, as Councilor Norris was speaking before about grants, like there are some grants where you can go, I'm just gonna apply for this and get it right now. And I feel like tree planting is kind of like that for this kind of long-term project. This is one thing that people can do right away. Plant a tree and it's gonna help this project long-term, so. And, uh, I did attend.
Pollinator.
But a tree, yes. Yes. Um, I did attend the, the MyCoast, um, app rollout thing, and I just want to say, um, like you, you can just look it up in the App Store, MyCoast, and it does collect really helpful information. You can, from your house, if you have a weather issue, you can literally take a picture of it, post it on there, and then the city has access to that information to either use it for projects like this as data points, or it also helps us, um, our emergency response or utility response or those types of things. Um, if that app can gain some traction and, and people who live near the water or near all these areas which, which, um, experience flooding, it could be a really useful tool and it's super, super easy to use. Um, so I just want to encourage people, if they're, um, interested in that, uh, it's called MyCoast and it's, it's really easy. And if you have any questions, you can always contact, uh, Sierra, because she is always, um, able to, to answer those, because she's the connector between all of those things. So, um, I just want to thank you for, for all of that, um, information and just encourage people on City Day, Day to go visit your, your booth. I, um, I think you guys gave away plants last year and I heard lots of good, people were excited to get a free plant, so.
They're gonna do that tissue.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a good draw for your booth.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. So I'll take a, I have a ten-minute recess so that, uh, people can take a bathroom break, and then we'll come back for the special mayor and council.
I don't know what you want me to do, but.
Sierra. Sierra, very impressive.
Is that possible?
Very impressive.
About the presentation, about the work?
The work is good, your presentation, your delivery was spot on.
I know, I was trying to get you, I was trying to give you guys a lot of information, but we respect for the time.
Aye. I'm about to rip off her blanking, I'm like. No, but seriously, it wa, it was, you know. I don't want you to sound like I'm surprised or anything, I'm just saying, I'm just saying it was. Yeah, it was really good.
I'll get my.
The password.
It was good, and, um, do you guys know any property owners, and I know you live in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm right there.
We're trying to mesh with, um, like, connecting to the V and a lot of the park, um, parking owners to see. It's super cute.
Recording stopped.
So, um, I'm not sure if she's, uh.
Is, um, Nicole? I think it's Nicole, John's, um, John's parking and then Pat's.
Yeah, Frank, yeah.
Frank Capwell is, um, we're talking to him too.
Yeah. Square part, and I will get the lot right across the street. Okay, straight up, so, yeah. So you know when you're talking about.
I'm about to head out, are you sure?
If the resident, let's say you pick a spot, and you do a bump out, right in front of that house, who would maintain that?
So.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, welcome to the City Groton Special Mayor and Council Meeting for Monday, twenty-eight, uh, twenty-eight July, twenty twenty-five. City Clerk, please call and roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Councilor Piazza, Councilor Sheffield, and Councilor Norris.
Okay, thank you. So we have new business. Uh, I will take a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute of one dash two hundred and six Alpha Personnel Public Works Department to include Mayor and Council, Deidre LeConte, and, uh, Brian LeClair.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we are in executive session.